Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Town of Naples Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Would you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In attendance tonight, we have Jen Lehman, who's our alternate, Martina Witz, Marty Zatarian, myself, Douglas Bogdan, Kathy Tomorelli, our municipal planner. Kathy Eddy is the Assistant to the Code Office and the Planner. And we'll invite Jen in as a voting member tonight. Thank you, Jen. Two A, do any of your board members have any conflicts of interest with any of the items on the agenda this evening?
No.
No? Four noes. Item three is to review the meeting minutes for July 15th, 2025.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 15th.
A motion and a second motion by Marty and a second by Martina to approve July 15th minutes. All in favor? Three zero to approve. And a motion to approve minutes from the August 5th meeting.
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Marty motion to approve.
Second.
Martina, second. All in favor? You three? The only reason Jen's not voting for these is because she was not here for those.
And just want to thank Kathy for excellent.
Thank you.
Item four is old business, we have none. Five is table business, we have none. We'll jump to six is new business. It's a request for, requested by Crosswalk Community Outreach, presented by, represented by, I'm sorry, David Moore, for a change of use to allow for a nonprofit service organization in a 3,750 square foot of an existing 5,040 square foot commercial building located at 11 October Road that's shown on map, Lot U36/9 in the Commercial Zoning District. Please step up and state your name and let us know what's going on.
I'm with Crosswalk Community Outreach. My name's David Moore. I think most of you know what we do in the community. We've been doing this about 17 years, food pantry. We used to do it out of the gym until the roof got condemned. Now we're doing it out of a senior, senior building, Grange, and we're just looking for more room. It's just too small to do what we do over there. So we're looking for a bigger space, basically, to do our pantry.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so I'm just curious, so what's, what do you anticipate to be the traffic flow? And how quickly are you guys going to be operating?
We do the pantry every other Monday. So it's like two months, two days a month. So about four hours on a Monday. That's the bulk of the traffic.
And how many folks do you anticipate coming on a typical Monday?
Oh, 70-ish, 70 families.
Over a four-hour period?
Yep.
And where, so I drove by the facility today. Where do you anticipate you're going to have the traffic pattern? Where you'd be loading the food onto the people?
Well, we have people come inside and pick their own food. They park out back, they'll park out back, come in, get their box of food, pick out what they want, and they get to pick their own food, and then take it to the cars and leave. So the volunteer will be on the front side where the tire is. There'll be enough room there for the volunteers, and then the patriots could go to the backside and come through the back door.
Okay. And you're going to do additional pavement back there? Or is it just going to be as it is?
No, it's just a lease, so we're not gonna, unless the landlord does something with it, we're not gonna.
So you guys won't do anything?
That would be up to the landlord.
Could you tell us how many parking spaces are around the back?
Well, the length of the building, like a nine-foot parking lot, like they have out here, I think you can put 15 in the front, 15 again in the back, and then along the woods, you could probably do another 15 or 20, and then you could, there's probably another five or 10 you could scatter around and get them in and out. Not everybody shows up at once. We get people that come at the end of the pantry, people that come at the beginning of the pantry. It's not all at once.
And how many cars for the volunteers?
Maybe 10, 10 to 15, depending on how many volunteers we get. A lot of them are husband and wife, so they obviously ride together.
So do you, any of, what's your plan on how you're going to direct people to queue up? Or is it going to be kind of like just everyone comes in and they park where they want? Or I mean, how would you want to manage it?
No, the first, first few pantries will be out there directing traffic, make sure people know where they need to go and where they can go, where they can't go. And once they figure it out, they can, they pretty much know after that. They come every week. But the first few times, we'll have to be out there directing, pointing and telling. It'll be new for everybody, so they'll have to learn, learn the ropes, once they figure it out.
Yeah, I think the concern is that we, that there's enough spot, enough space so that the cars can either park or queue up. So is that new that they would be parking? I always thought that when you had it here, that they would just queue up around.
No, that's the church next door that does it on Tuesday. They stay in the car, they do a drive-by, and they hand them a pre-made box.
Oh, I see, okay.
We have them come in and pick out their own food, where they get what they want, doesn't go to waste or whatever.
So there's no like line of, they'll, they'll have to park?
No, no, nobody's sitting in cars, no, no line down the road. They'll be in a parking spot.
Okay.
And as I say, we'll be out there monitoring it the first few times to make sure everything, you know, like anything else that's new, you gotta, gotta learn it.
Yeah. Will you have large trucks coming to drop off the food?
We do have, a Good Shepherd traffic comes on the second and fourth Thursday of the month. They usually don't bring a lot. Sometimes they have to bring a trailer in because they've got to pick up afterwards on their way home, but a lot of times it's just a box truck. That's a, once, maybe twice a month. The rest of it is pickup truck loads and van loads.
Did you, to date, did you have the chance to see the questions on the memo that the planner provided? Or did you want to? There's some questions on this.
I wasn't here when this came in.
Oh.
I can address those, or we can ask them after when we get to it.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't want to go through it all, because I know that you had written some of these questions, I had some of the same questions. Other than what's on here, I'm done.
Can I understand that a, that a box truck wouldn't have a problem getting up there? Is there a problem with a trailer truck getting in the access?
Well, they have the trailer trucks up there.
Okay.
I've actually pictures of a trailer truck up there that's.
That's gone up and made a delivery.
But we've been working with Good Shepherd and the landlord to make sure that it can happen, yeah. Good Shepherd's been out there, and the landlords met with us. So we're gonna make sure it can happen.
Do you want to go over the discussion process?
Sure, absolutely. I just want to, for the record, we did receive a memo on August 13th, or a letter from a butter, and it was published to the town's website as part of the packet, but they have addressed several issues that were in my memo. One of them is, they suggested potentially a traffic study. This is going to be well below the threshold of a traffic study. So that one is not a concern, but I also want to distinguish between the fact that there are two food pantries. One is Naples Food Pantry and the other is Crosswalk. And Naples is the one that you see queuing here at the town office that is not Crosswalk that is queuing for the pickup. And it's my understanding, it's not your intention, like you just expressed tonight, that you have the clients come in and pick up their food, so they will be parking, not queuing. However, I did address that in the conditions, that, you know, the October Road is, is an easement for this parcel. It is not, they do not own the fee. The remaining land owns the fee to that, so there can't be any parking or queuing on that at all, because that is an access for both the boatyard as well as the backlot, which could be developed at a later time. There were some other issues about the parking space. As part of the '05 approval, there had been a, I included the approved plan in your packet, 111505, but they had also provided a sketch showing approximately 31 spaces striped, with some of them being along the front and some of them being in the back. With that comment, I think that there should be some signage to where customers should enter and where perhaps the staff parks, and also, you know, just to provide circulation so people know, obviously you're going to have someone out there the first couple of times, and people aren't habitable, but there should be, at least for especially the, the accessible handicap parking, there's going to need to be signage for that. I'm just going on through this about the spaces. We did just talk about the tractor-trailer. When I did Google Earth the first time, there was actually a tractor-trailer parked in the back, just the bed. So somebody got in there. Ideally, I could say box trucks would be better, but it sounds like you're not typically receiving tractor-trailer and you're not receiving deliveries when you're serving customers at the same time.
No, no. The law will be empty when they come up.
And then the other, I think there was another comment about the protective covenants. I did look at those covenants, the declarations for when this was business common. So the first approval was way back in 1986, and that was a subdivision approval when they divided the lots, and then the 2005 site plan approval, which divided it into four commercial units, and that's where they had the associated parking plan. When this was approved back in the day, that was just for subdivision, and the protective covenants were with it. There was one covenant that kind of jumped up, jumped out, which was 1.6, which is a sign restriction, which is more restrictive than the Naples sign ordinance. So if you were to move forward with this project, I did craft a condition that said that whichever is the most restrictive, they need to apply, they have to abide by that. So I think that kind of addresses the, or does address the things that are in this letter that came from Alan Keefe and Justice Shand. I'm not sure if they're here tonight. Oh, you are here. So obviously, they could speak to that as well. But the biggest thing, I think, is the no queuing on October Road, and certainly not queuing out into 302 in any, in any scenario. So I'll leave it with that for right now. I had listed some of that as discussion items as well in my memo, so.
I have a question. So your operation is during the daytime, correct?
Yes, yep, yep, Mondays.
So will there be no added lighting for the facility?
What is it?
There'll be no added lighting, correct? There's no need for adding any additional lighting?
No, 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 it's all daytime stuff.
Okay, because there is some restrictive covenant on the lighting as well.
Yeah, no, it's all daytime, daytime delivery, daytime service, yeah.
Okay.
What about after, when it gets dark at 3, 4 o'clock around here? I mean, what, will you?
Yeah, we're done, we're, we're done by 1:30 on a Monday. We'll just clean out.
Are there going to be other uses there? Are you expanding your services?
That's not the plan at this time, no. I mean, I can't say what the future will bring, but right now, we need more room for our pantry.
Okay, and you're leasing basically three quarters of it, and then there's still a quarter of it that's available for lease?
Yeah, well, yeah, part of it is leased already.
Oh, okay.
It's 500,000 square feet, and we're looking at 3,700. The rest of it's already rented, leased.
So if you look at your site plan dated 2005, they're looking at the first four, three units will be combined into one, and that's 3,750 square feet. The total area is 5,040. Also to note, the fire chief, recently has been in. Fire chief and the code officer came in and issued a certificate of occupancy, the, more recently than the '05. I don't have it off the top of my head, but of course, they would, if they make any changes to the interior, they would need new building permits as well as a new certificate of occupancy. So, and they are making some changes, so that would be, they would have to meet those standards.
So they'd have to get another visit from code and fire?
They would have to before they got a certificate of occupancy, yes.
Martina, when you touched on another business in the building, and you said you're not, you guys are not taking up all four bays.
Correct.
Is there another business in that building right now?
There is some kind of, I think, plumbing and heating business in there that you just use it for storage, as far as I know. They're not working out of there, they use it as a storage unit.
Okay.
To my best of my knowledge.
There's been several approvals over the years for different uses in these units, the latest of which, there was one for automobile repair at one time, but that's no longer there. My understanding is that back unit is currently storage for a contractor.
Okay, I'm bringing that up because if we have limited parking there, and another business is taking up five spaces for whatever their vehicles may be, that they're allowed to take up X amount of spaces, and that's going to take away from anything that you might have or need.
I'm sorry, Kathy, did you say the fire chief did go there, so there's enough room?
The chief and, yes, for, I've started to get a rescue vehicle or a fire, yes. And that was fairly recently. I wish I had the folder right here, but they both came in. It must have been for the, associated to a change of use and a certificate of occupancy.
It was November of '24.
November of '24, it's in my memo.
Yeah, we had that, I saw that.
Yeah, yeah, so they were in there recently. I spoke with both the chief and I spoke with Steve, effectively Buildings and Grounds and Public Works, and they both had no issues with the proposal, other than that they, the fire chief would need to get back in if there was changes to the current fire protection. He would get back in either way, because they're changing the use.
Okay.
So to go down through the discussion items, the site plan was approved in 2005. Just says commercial units that were there for the community crossroads to use 3750 of it. Those questions, has the wall's been removed?
I don't know, that's a question.
It's a wide-open warehouse.
It's wide open?
Okay.
And the remaining square footage will be storage? Is that the remaining, the last section, section four?
For the time being, that's the case. If they want to do something different, they would come in for a change of use for that portion of the building.
But right now, somebody else is occupying it, right?
Yes, someone's occupying it, yes.
The property has grown, and so.
Okay, and she needs to, hold on a second. There'll, there'll be an opportunity for you to speak, but we need to have it up front when you do.
Thank you, Kathy. There says, "But there's a landscaping, there's no residential use adjacent to the parcel, and all the existing vegetation's going to remain."
Yeah, there's a 50-foot buffer in one of the covenants that says that they cannot be, cannot go within 50, 50 feet surrounding that property.
And then, since vehicular access, is what modifications, if any, we require for the food and supply deliveries? Trucks drive over the existing septic tank field, septic tank and field? That was something that you got to check on, Kathy.
The answer to that question is no. So despite what it shows on this 2005 plan with an arrow going around the building, it would be suitable for a car to drive over that? If you, I did pull the HH, or the HHE 200 and speak with the code officer, and it's rated for regular load, which would be a regular vehicle, but the trailer, tractor-trailers or any kind of heavy equipment shouldn't be driving around that end, because the septic tank is down there and the leach field is not in where you would be going around the building, but it's close by. So they really should block that off for, through traffic. You shouldn't be driving over that. And as it's configured right now, I took my car around it, but it's really, it's not meant to be driven around, so it really needs to be indicated that you can't drive across it for delivery trucks.
For sure. So then it should be blocked off?
They need to keep, well, I don't care whether it's rocks or whatever it is, but something to keep trucks from driving around. And if there's, if the back entrance is the truck entrance, maybe it's blocked off on the backside, you know, just to make sure that that's not driven on.
And the fire chief hopefully will be okay with that?
I will, we can, we can do that as part of the certificate of occupancy, what's, what meets his requirements. In an emergency, you know, he's going to do what he needs to do. So we can make sure that whatever resolution is to that, there is room for a vehicle to get through there without going on the septic system, but I would want to verify with the chief that that's going to work for him.
I don't want to block off the fire pipe access there.
The way to get around, yeah.
I mean, he's a big truck and probably wouldn't want him driving around the building either, but if they're there to put out fires, it's a different story.
There's two accesses to the rear and the front, so the assumption would be that they would use both if needed, and would not necessarily need to go around that end.
Can I ask, so you're looking at this, right?
Yes.
So that means that it doesn't indicate that it's paved all the way around, so where are the cars going to go? If that is to be blocked off, then the cars that are supposed to park in the back can't park there either.
There's two, there's two accesses.
Other side of the building?
No, there's, there's two 18 by 30 driveways, so they could park and then exit the same drive.
Go this way?
Oh, it goes from this side?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I got it, thanks.
And the front is paved, the rear is currently not paved. I can't tell whether it used to be paved. It looks to me like it never was paved in the back, but I couldn't really tell. Yeah.
And 95 is parking and circulation, because applicant slash owner proposes to complete the paving, ensuring 2005.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I had heard one of you say that the landlord might improve the parking, but I could have misspoken there.
Well, if need be for Good Shepherd to get their truck in there, they'll modify the back to accommodate the truck, if need be.
So my question related to that is the accessible parking. Where is that proposed to be? Where is the entrance and access to this building? Was it in the rear or the front? Ideally, that would be where it's paved for accessible access. So when you described it, you were talking about having staff in the front and customers in the back, which is not paved. So where would that, where would the accessible parking be located?
Well, I thought that part would be accessible. It's gravel, it's not tire, but it's, it's parking.
But you're talking ADA accessible, wheelchair accessible?
Oh, that would have to be out front of the tire, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're getting at.
We could, we could designate spaces out front.
And is there going to be enough?
Handicap.
Is there going to be enough space for the parking on the pavement and two-directional traffic if the back's going to be blocked? Because they're going to have to go in and pull out with the parking on the pavement, I, I really think we're going to need a parking plan with real measurements for today's conditions.
So.
It's 36 feet wide.
Yeah, when they came, when they came in 2005, they provided a parking plan with a site evaluator, and it was actually narrower than this. And sometime between when that was submitted and the final plan that's shown as approved here, it grew. And I, so there's nothing that matches, their, their proposed parking plan does not match what you're seeing here, but the amount of pavement and parking actually, area is actually bigger than what they showed, and that accommodated 31 spaces. And it wasn't, it was going to be back up and go back out the same entrance. I thought about providing that, but I didn't like the fact that it did, the measurements didn't match exactly what was approved, and there was no documentation on how they got from there to what was actually approved.
But the approved one?
Yeah.
Like Martina's looking at, it says 36.
Thirty, it says 30 plus or minus parking spaces.
Yeah, but it gives the width of that as 36 feet, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, one to the right is 36 feet, and the other one's 35 feet. That's, that's plenty of room to go.
Pull out of the space and go back.
Yeah.
So the, so the ADA parking would have to be on the front, so it'd have to be access to the building for ADA on the front. So there doesn't need to be a ramp?
I wondered about that as well. I went and took a drive-by, and I didn't know if the door opening meant ADA or not, if it's 36 inches, and if it opens the right direction, and if there's any barriers to access without being in the building. But that I did address as a condition, is that they have to meet ADA. I mean, you have to have it, you have to be accessible. And I crossed out the ramp because I don't think that there needs to be a ramp, and I'm not sure, so I had said accessible parking and access meeting ADA is required prior to opening to the public. At some point, they must have met whatever the uses were there, but this is a different scenario. Now this is going to be more open to the public. Before, it seemed to be more of a few employees and storage. Now this kind of changes the use a bit. It's an allowed use in commercial zoning, but it's just a little bit different scenario where you're serving your service organization.
Item, item six is public safety. It says, "Has been inspected by the code, Naples Code Department and the Fire Chief in November of 2024, but it will need to be inspected again."
And it'll need to be inspected again? That was based on what the uses that were there, and a certificate of occupancy was issued for those uses?
And that'll include the ADA access at the same time?
Yes.
And Marty mentioned lighting, exterior lighting, and said there'll be no new exterior lighting, and it onto it. And the sciences, Kathy said, that she wrote in 11, is that it'll have to meet whichever one is more strict.
And as well as the lighting, I didn't catch the lighting, Marty, that Marty caught in the covenants, so any new lighting would have to meet the town's standards or the restrictive covenants, whichever is the most restrictive. Right now, it doesn't sound like they're proposing any additional lighting, but, you know, if you extended your hours for any reason, or had any other type of activity at night, then you might need some more lighting for safety in the parking.
So we'll most likely add that as I have 12 of the, or do you have the two dress lights?
I did lighting in three, but I didn't, I didn't have the restrictive covenants, or whatever's the most restrictive.
It's on page three, item number six on there, 86 covenant. So it's, use of neon signs, lighted signs or flashing lighted signs is prohibited.
Yeah.
And any lighting must be indirect lighting.
Does anyone have anything else to the applicant? Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Okay, for everybody from the public act, watch the speech. Great.
Alan Keefe's Marine, abutting on the same property, same access. My concern is only traffic, because I work both sides of the road. I own the other three lots in the subdivision. I do know there is an insulation company up back there now in the 1,100 square feet that does use it in the winter. I've pulled them out of the ditch three times. The road, this has nothing to do with the proposal. It was, the road isn't maintained above my fence. He does have a company come in and plow it. Most of the snow, he pushes out of the back lot, so at the top of the road, it's supposed to be a hammerhead for truck access, or fire truck turn around or whatever. That's been turned into the second driveway and then a partial, and all of it gets pushed across the road. into the other remaining land, which is owned by another person. The tractor trailer truck issue I have is they can't pull in up there, so they use my property to turn around and then go up into there. So, you might see a tractor trailer truck in there, but my property is used every time to get a tractor trailer truck up in there. There has been two fires since I've been there. Previously, this was a marijuana grove, which occupied all four buildings plus a Conex box out back that was, if you see the big pile of stone, the Conex box was on top of that, and that's since been removed. It was paved out back there four years ago. What happened is the building, when it got put in, was below grade. All the water would run into the building and flood the building. So, therefore, he's dug it all out behind it, so it comes around the property and then runs along the stone wall down to the, the state road into the culvert. The concern is there is no room up there when there's snow. Whether you have to bring in an excavator to, I mean, I push the banks back. I have my own equipment. I maintain up to my fence line. The hammerhead at the top is not wide enough for a tractor trailer truck to pull in by itself. It has to either back in from the main road or it pulls into my adjacent lot and then backs up into the second driveway. On the first driveway, in the very back where you guys wanna block it off, which I understand there's a septic there, there's a hydrant with the fire department that they test every year. That, too, they've always had times, hard time getting into that property. Whether it's, I know the fire chief's been up there, but if you're blocking that off, I would be concerned about them backing out because there's a ditch on one side of the road. I know how long a fire truck is, so. And I know that they get two fire trucks up there and then the rest line the road. Basically, that's, I mean, I'm not against, I'm just worried about traffic. And come Mondays, are very busy for boat season. And I know it's not, um, it's not very packed right there right now, but in another two months, there'll be three hundred plus boats there, which I know I've run out of space. I've bought property in Harrison to kind of move some of that, but it does get very congested there. And then with snow, I'm just worried about the flow running right down the road and then blocking. I go back and forth with a tractor between all three lots. And there's a lot of movement throughout the day. I know they have done a lot to the building. They've taken down walls, they've spray foamed it, they've fixed the floor, I believe. So, they have done a lot. They did cut the whole front buffer, so the only thing there is my buffer, trees. They've cut right to my line. And I believe, I would check the width of the pavement, because I'm not quite sure it's that width. That whatever's on pavement.
Yeah, whatever it says, yeah, thirty-six feet or something like that.
Yeah, I would check the width of that. Because that all changed because five years ago, maybe six years ago, the previous owner ended up running power poles up the property, up the road, and that wasn't legal with the-
Covenants, yeah, it's underground power specified.
So, he's the heir of the covenants. So, if you had any issues with the covenances on the property or how that was all set up?
He literally had telephone poles up the opposite side of the street where he was on, and then brought it over.
I hate speaking, but if you speak, you have to come up to the front. So, it gets recorded, that's all.
So, that's all. I just wanted to, I'm all for the program. I'm just, as long as there's parking in the line of traffic and it's safe for everybody. I'm all about it, just taking into consideration the snow on a dead-end road with, on an acre and one point one acres of land.
Well-
And two business.
Thank you. Hold on for a second, just for a second. You said there's a hydrant up there, is that, is that an active hydrant?
It's a, it's actually a cistern.
Cistern, okay.
And the chief did draw it on the plan. It's not, it's near where the disposal field is, towards the end of the paved area in the front. When I say block off, I mean protect the tank, the leach field, and the cistern.
Yeah.
Whether that's bollards, whether that's rocks, you can leave that up to the fire chief to sign off on how those are protected. Kind of, as far as snow storage, is it because it's not pushed back far enough and they're just piling it up? Or, or does it just need to be?
You have one point one acre land with a five thousand square foot building.
Yeah.
And-
And a lead, a wall in the back, basically.
Yeah. And there's no, I mean, and then say you block that off. I see that snow either going across the street to the vacant property or- Yeah, yeah, I don't care if it's on mine, but it's just, I'm concerned about the traffic. That's all. Other than that, I'm all for.
Okay. Thanks. I think, hopefully, we've addressed a little bit of the road blockage on October Road by not allowing parking to be on October Road.
Or queuing.
Or queuing.
Parking or queuing.
Yeah. So, hopefully, that will address the problem of going back and forth across and not, not having anybody anywhere.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think, hopefully, that will take care of that issue. If you wanna check on the width of the pavement, is that something that we could do?
Well, you could decide to schedule a sidewalk, that's in your purview. The, the other thing I'm wondering is the back part, whether or not the snow could be pushed off the end, at least on the unpaved section. The front, we can't do that because of the cistern and the, and the disposal field. Just a question whether or not some of it could be taken care of. But it should either be taken care of onsite, the snow storage hauled away, or if there's room to push it off the end of October, which I'm not sure if there is or not, and still allow room for turnaround. And I was wondering about that pavement. I couldn't tell, but it looked like it may have been paved in the past.
So, this, um, having, requiring a snow removal plan is typical when you do a site plan review. And I'm just, this is kind of the first time where we're looking at something, where someone's leasing the property.
Yeah.
And I guess I've just, so when this whole thing was built, the owner never had to provide a snow removal plan?
Typically, you would have shown a location on the approved site plan where the snow would be stored. So-
And it was oh five, so who knows?
Yeah, yeah, wherever that, this, this is what was approved in oh five. So, you know, if we could identify a location for snow removal and any additional snow would have to be taken offsite, you know, or is there another place that could be used for snow removal? But to the greatest extent possible, given that, it should be onsite as to the greatest extent possible. Obviously, they have rights of passing over October, and they have to clear October for the other people as well. So, if there is room to shove it towards the end, but I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, I feel, I feel like there's so many unknowns here. I mean, so, so certainly, I guess we could say we approve it with all of these conditions, and then they could find out that there is no place to put the snow, there is no whatever, or there's no, so who, who's left holding the bag then? I mean, it's not a problem for the planning board, because if they can't meet our conditions, then it's not happening. But is the potential tenant left?
Right.
Have they already signed a lease? Is this all pending?
This is all pending.
I don't want them to be left holding the bag on a site that's-
You know, the other thing is, is that there are the covenants, and there are responsibilities of the owner and the tenant as well. And just making sure that they're, that the tenant is aware of the responsibilities and the costs associated with renting this. But as far as the planning board's purview, I think the question is snow storage. The configuration of the parking, how is that, how is that going to work? Is there, where is the accessible parking gonna be? Where is the patron parking gonna be? And where is the delivery going to take place? I think we kind of know in our mind where that is gonna happen, but, and then how, how are we going to safely protect the cistern and disposal field while still providing access to those? Those are my questions.
If we did a sidewalk and went up there, would you be able to tell where the cistern is? Because you see where the hydrant is.
Yeah, the hydrant is there.
So, you'd be able to tell where that is?
I, I think, I mean, it sounds like, listening to you, it sounds like that might be something that you want to do. That being said, I don't think that there would be a ton of additional submittals for this. So, if you choose to go that route, I would like to get it on the next agenda, available agenda, which would add to our September second agenda.
But I just advertised.
But she just advertised, so we can't do that.
September second.
So, it'd have to be September sixteenth, correct?
Yeah.
That's right.
So, it would have to be at the September, I'm looking for dates, September sixteenth.
Yeah, September sixteenth is the next one. So, basically, we're bringing a tape measure, right? To measure how wide this pavement or this supposed parking area is, because you're saying we're not gonna be getting any more submissions? Because that's part of the conversation?
That's, or we could get the, get the data and then submit it to you and do it that way as well. I can tell you what was approved in, in the oh five plan is, does not exist there today. Whether it did in twenty-ten or twenty-twenty, it may have, but it's not the way that it's shown here.
So, whose responsibility is that? The owner to provide an actual as-built plan?
It could be the owner or the applicant or the person leasing. It's whoever provides, provides it. I mean, it would be best if the owner provided it, but the applicant can as well.
I mean, I just, because we know that the applicant is a nonprofit. I don't wanna put any undue burden.
That's inappropriate for me to say, I'm sorry, but I just, I feel like we should- Yeah.
I, I, I mean, somebody's getting money to rent this, and they should be providing us with what's real.
And this would apply to any change of use, not just, so if another person came in and said that they wanted to do X, Y, Z, unless they were doing the exact same thing that was previously approved, they would have to come back to planning board, so this would come up either way.
Right.
So, it would be a hindrance for another person to lease it as well. The other option is to say it's gotta be paved like shown in the approved plan, right? And to the thirty-six inches or at least gravelled in the back. That's a huge expense to do that. So, there's a number of approaches that you could take. You could say this is what was approved in oh five, this is what was built in oh five. It hasn't been maintained, it needs to be brought back up. You could potentially waive the pavement in the back, but it needs to be something that someone can access safely. You remember, you're gonna have clients in the back parking. So, it's up to you guys how you proceed. I did, I did make a draft motion addressing some of these items. The plan that you see, oh five plan accommodates approximately thirty parking, thirty people parking. That portion in the front is not that wide, but could they still park there? Probably, probably can still park on the gravel portion. So, when I'm listening to you, you may wanna see it in person.
Yeah, you said on the front side.
Yeah, on the front side, there's pavement, but I don't know that it's completely thirty-six inches.
And that's where the ADA access is gonna be, so.
Yeah, yeah.
If we postpone this a week, a month, is this gonna impact your operation?
Every other Monday.
Pardon?
Every other Monday.
Yeah, but I mean, if we postpone, you know, the approval for this by, for a month?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Will it impact?
We're still, we're still working out the senior center.
Okay, so your, your servicing, you know, community will still continue?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And we're still, we're still in the green draw.
That's, that's important.
Yeah. And yeah, and while I certainly not wanna drag things out, I also feel like I, I don't wanna make any mistakes so that we're not leaving you potentially with a site that's not going to work or that, I don't know, that it's not, you're not gonna have place to put your snow and your people all at the same time and have your trucks come in. It's a little bothersome.
Yeah.
That's all.
It'd be nice for the owner to come, too.
I think, I think, I think that this site could work. I mean, this is just, the, I think it's a good site for this operation. I just think that there are some questions, and these questions would come up regardless of who the applicant was and, or the use. Any change of use would bring this up again. And so, I, I don't want to slow things down so that they lose the opportunity to lease this location. But I think that a sidewalk might be warranted just so that we make sure we're taking care of all of the items that have come up by the abutters as well as you denied.
So, I don't think they have to submit anything new to us at all?
I, I don't think that there's anything new. I could pull some of the items in the file, even though they don't match up exactly to what's, was approved. And I don't know how it got from here to here, but I can pull some other items as well. So, those would be additional submittals. But again, the earliest we could get them on would be September sixteen.
Yeah, that's fine. As long as it doesn't impact their operation, that's fine.
The city owner moving along.
Yeah, as long as they can service the community.
Would you entertain a sidewalk on the second before the public hearing for the ordinances? Or would you do it on the sixteenth?
Can you do that without the notification? You said you had to know.
Just on the sixteenth, yeah. We have a really tough, the newspaper cycle is tough to beat here.
I just wanted to point out on that, though, that I'm not going to be here, and Robert has recused himself from this part, this thing.
On the sixteenth?
Yeah. No, if you did it, if you did it on the second.
Oh, that's right, you're not here.
So, the sixteenth would work better.
Sixteenth would work, depending on the timeframe.
So, I just don't, and there's, we don't-
We have three for the second, but you're not one of the three.
I'm not one of them.
Okay, and then the sixteenth, you're not gonna be here, but we should have three others.
And Robert can't be.
Robert can't be one.
I can't be on the sixteenth either.
Oh, boy.
It's like Tetris. I think just for the general public to understand, Robert Flock has recused himself from this particular-
Particular application. So, on the sixteenth, we would need to have three, but it can't be Robert Flock.
I can be here on the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth?
Yes, I'm the sixteenth.
All right, so it's only we have a quorum? Okay, okay, all right. It's tough, it's a little tough.
May I speak?
Mark?
Yeah, Mark Clement. Hey, is there any reason why you couldn't approve it with conditions? There's no downside to that, right? They don't lose a chance. Police great property. Heard Kathy herself say she thinks this would be an excellent place to do this business, so I just thought, what's the downside to it?
Do we add some conditions about snow removal? I mean, I feel like we'd definitely add some more conditions.
While we were talking, I added, I, I provided an updated one that wasn't in my memo based on the abutters input, and I was out for a couple of days due to a family issue. So, I added those, and we have one through eleven. Now, I've added twelve signage to clearly indicate staff and client parking is required. Thirteen, no snow storage cannot block either driveway or the turnaround on October, because I think it's road, not laid, road. So, I mean, you could leave it up to them to deal with the snow storage, but it can't, it can't block either entrance, because they need both of those entrances.
Right.
And it can't, can't be, you know, blocking October at the lane. I'm looking at the overhead here, and I can't tell how far past that second driveway it goes because of the tree cover. And I wanted to back up about the buffer. The buffering requirement was on the perimeter of the subdivision, not necessarily between each lot.
Oh, okay.
So, as long as no additional vegetation is removed, which I don't think they have any intention of removing additional vegetation. So, it's really up to, it's really up to your comfort level of what you'd like to see or whether or not to move forward. One way to give it more teeth would be, uh, snow storage cannot block either driveway or the turnaround and must meet Naples Fire Department's approval or must be approved by Naples Fire Department.
I also heard from the abutter comment something about the trucks not want, I mean, I'm not, that the abutter does not want the trucks using his property for turnaround. So, I don't know if there's, I mean, so all, all truck turning around and everything needs to happen either on the subject property or on October Road, but not on anybody else's property. either on the subject property or on October Road, but not on anybody else's property.
Yes, and he has access, he has easements rights to October Road. So turning around, using the driveway to turn around on October Road or turning around on the property, but all turning movements must be limited to the subject parcel or October Road. And not.
Not any other bodies.
No, not adjacent properties. That's 14.
So, so when Mark mentioned conditions, conditions would be that it means ADA, that it's going to be the ADA accessible parking?
Yeah, I had that as number six, accessible parking and access meaning ADA is required prior to opening to the public.
I think we can, I think we could approve it. We've got enough conditions here.
Okay, conditions, sure. That's fine.
We've got 14. That's my biggest list of conditions ever.
Yeah. Well, I had a feeling it was going to go one this way or the other, so I tried to think of everything. But there's all this stuff on the fly.
Well, I think it's also just to protect, you know.
Protect.
Again, because the owner would have to go through this for any change of use, as you keep pointing out, regardless, you know. These folks didn't have to.
All right, make a motion for that?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the request by Crosswalk Community Outreach represented by David Moore for a change of use to allow for a nonprofit service organization in 3,750 square feet of an existing 5,040 square feet commercial building located at 11 October Road as shown on map lot U 3609 in the commercial zoning district with the following findings of fact and conditions of approval. So.
Yeah, I don't think we have to read all those.
Do we want to read these all, but we want to definitely add, we want to amend the one. So according to the conditions of approval in the memo dated August 19th with a change to number three, which we'll now read. Any additional exterior lighting must meet the standards found in 908.8HA or the covenants, whichever is more restrictive. So that one will be updated. The other ones as written. And then we're going to add 12, or no, we're changing the.
12.
12. Any new lighting would have to meet town, that one, is that what 12?
We already have that one.
That was, that was added to three.
Number three.
Oh, so what you said, okay.
So 12 changed to parking.
I've had 12 signage to clearly indicate staff and client, staff, client and accessible parking is required.
And then 13 will be snow restore, snow storage. That one cannot block either driveway entrance or October Road. And its placement must be approved by the fire chief.
Naples Fire Department.
And number 14 will be all turning of trucks or cars must be on the subject property or October Road and not on any abutters properties.
It works.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Do we need to add anything to that Kathy saying after sidewalk on the date?
Well, no, we're not going to do a sidewalk then if you're going to approve it, but conditions. I, I would note that, just so for the public record, that number 10, I had put in it that it's responsibly of the applicant operator to ensure vehicles do not queue on the subject parcel. No queuing vehicles will be permitted on October Road or onto Route 302. If this occurs, the Town of Naples Code Officer has the authority to revoke the certificate of occupancy until the issue is resolved. So I gave the CEO some teeth in case there's a complaint or there's an issue or he notices an issue with the parking and queuing, because that seemed to be the major concern of the abutters and most of you tonight.
Okay, so a motion by Martina, seconded by Marty. Any more discussion? In favor? Most, no, full, thank you very much.
I'll have a notice of decision for you by the end of the week.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take that back. I'll have a draft notice of decision for you, but it probably will not be signed until September 2nd at the next meeting. Okay? And please be advised, you will need to pull any building permits that are, if you're needing any changes to the structure.
Guys, you all set?
Thank you very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Let it come for a second. Item seven is public participation. For planning board matters, are there any?
Hey, we're not quite done yet, everybody.
Okay, so seven, public participation for planning board matters. Do we have any tonight?
I think we did that.
I think our public's gone.
Yep.
Okay, eight, other business, signing of plans and notices of decision.
Yes.
For A Deb's place minus, minus subdivision. Dennis Liberty's final site plan, Wildflower Estates, major, major site preliminary plan. Thank you. And Rittenmore, major, you say SD.
Subdivision.
I lose that every time. Subdivision final plan, as I read it four times yesterday and today.
Yeah, so those two plans are over there. If you were there for those meetings, please sign those. And then I think that the chair has the two notices of decision. Need to be signed.
Three.
Three, three.
Is it all right that I highlight it?
Sorry, three, yeah, yeah.
Unless you want me to sign a clean one.
I lost my agenda somewhere in the file.
Unless you want me to sign a clean one, I highlighted it earlier today.
No, it's okay.
Okay. And our next meeting is the second?
It is, and that's, the only thing on the agenda is the ordinances. And we have changes to the Naples Land Use Ordinance, definitions, subdivision, dimensional standards and also to the Shoreland Zoning District for administration.
That's going to be a public hearing?
And that's going to be a public hearing. And then the September 8th Select Board Meeting, that's when they'll be finalizing the warrant. The only two items on the warrant, I believe, are going to be the Naples Recreation Center and the ordinances.
Okay, and then the 16th is our meeting after that, so.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second, all four is there, we are adjourned.